One minute. When's your birthday?
Take you out for birthday lunch, like you did with me.
Uh, you couldn't make it. Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to Albany City Council's work session on Monday, May eighth, twenty twenty-three at four P. M. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Gabe, can you do a world call, please?
Yes, Your Honor. Mayor Alex Johnson, the second.
Here.
Counselors Newton.
Here.
Novak.
Here.
Montague.
Here.
Kapczynski.
Here.
McGee.
Present.
And Smith.
Here.
All members present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, Gabe. Is there business from the public on the, on, written up, signed in? There's none? Thank you very much. Would anybody in the gallery like to speak to the council during business from the public? Thank you. Next is a presentation, historical hangar presentation with Mark Baxter and Deb, Debbie Orger. It's a verbal presentation. Oh, you're doing it?
Well, I'm gonna introduce them.
Okay.
How's this for sound? Good? Okay. So, uh, those of you who don't know me, I'm Kristin Preston. I am the Public Works Operations Manager. And also here tonight in the back, we've got Rob Romeo, who is our Airport Manager. And so we have Mark, I'm sorry, Mark is speaking tonight, but I'm gonna introduce him. Um, so Rob is the manager of the Albany Municipal Airport that the city owns and operates. And a portion of the airport is in a historic district, and it's on the National Register of Historic Places. It's Albany's, uh, fourth, fourth and lesser-known historic district. It's the most prominent building, uh, that you'll see out there. It's the big historic hangar, uh, that the city owns and that was built in, uh, nineteen twenty-nine. And the historic hangar is the primary contributing feature of the historic district. It's a unique building and a unique roofing structure, and it has a large-span arched roof with lattice-style trusses made of old redwood. It's almost one hundred years old and a rare, one-of-a-kind building with lots of history. Given that, the city has an obligation to maintain and preserve this important historic structure. Over the years, there have been modifications by tenants that tend to detract from the building and the historic features. Structurally, the building is in good shape, uh, and in fact, we're doing a re-roofing project later this year that is mostly funded from federal grants and, uh, federal funding. So we're, we're maintaining the building, but restoration is quite expensive. The city is unable to fund historic restoration work on the hangar. But there is interest in this hangar, which you will hear, hear about today, to house a working aviation museum, to promote aviation, and to celebrate Albany's rich aviation history, with the goals to restore and preserve the hangar. So there's potential benefit for the longevity of the hangar, as well as for the airport with this project. So we have a speaker today. Uh, we were supposed to have two speakers, Debbie Orger, uh, who is unable to make it tonight, uh, unfortunately. Um, she is the member of the Ninety-Nines, the International Organization for Women's Pilots, and also Mark Baxter, who's here. And he is a member of the Oregon Aviation Historical Society. So Mark will come up to present, and he's gonna talk about the history and background and share their vision for Albany's historic hangar. And I have a presentation I'm gonna share for him.
Okay. Thanks for allowing me a few minutes to talk about this project. Um, what we're talking about is, as Kristin said, the hangar that was built in nineteen twenty-nine. It's a really remarkable building, um, in the sense that when it was built, there were no other hangars like it in Oregon. Um, it's a eighty-by-one-hundred-foot clear-span building with, uh, lattice, um, truss that's not used anymore, hasn't been used in years. And to our knowledge, it's the only building of its construction type left in Oregon. It is, without a doubt, um, Oregon's oldest continuously-used airplane hangar. This is the view from most people see of the airport, driving up by five. And, um, the hangar is pretty nondescript when you look at the other hangars there. Uh, you'd be forgiven if you didn't know what a historical building it is. There it is, in close-up. I think, um, I think a lot about people driving up and down the five, and they can look over and see airplanes taking off and landing there at the airport, but they really don't know anything about the history there. Um, when I was a kid, I always looked out the car window with wonder every time I got to see an airplane take off there, and I think kids do today. But they could be forgiven if they didn't know that in nineteen twenty, uh, young Charles Langmac, twelve-years-old, and his brother David, put together a World War One surplus trainer, right there where the airport is now. And they flew it that summer in nineteen twenty. Charles Langmac was only twelve-years-old when he soloed. By later that summer, they were already leasing the property and using it for barnstorming and destruction. Charles Langmac was actually Oregon's first registered pilot, and his, uh, pilot's license was signed by Orville Wright.
Cool.
He, he went on to have a remarkable career, um, many, many firsts. But, uh, Charles Langmac was the one who actually got the city to purchase the land and incorporate it to be a municipal airport. So it's been in continuous operation in the same location since nineteen twenty, making it easily Oregon's oldest airport. At, at one to, this is the way the hangar looked back in its, um, heyday. It, uh, Albany was throughout its historical period, the busiest municipal airport in Oregon. It was second in traffic only to Portland International Airport. Here's another picture of it on a busy day. So, one of the things that, uh, took place there at the, at the big hangar was that this remarkable woman and her husband, this is Evelyn Waldron Burleson, and her husband Howard operated the airport there. Um, as a teenager, Evelyn learned to fly in Nebraska, uh, in Lincoln, at the same airport where Charles Lindbergh le- learned to fly. And she would later go on to, uh, barnstorming, coyote hunting out of airplanes, um, hopping rides, all kinds of things, until she and Howard moved to Oregon to operate the airport in Albany. She was a remarkable, um, gal. She was the first commercial-rated pilot in the United States. She was the second ins- or, uh, instructor pilot in the United States. Here she is, um, teaching some of her students there in Albany. She would go on to teach hundreds of people to fly, and during the war, she taught pilots training for World War Two. Here she is in front of her little Taylorcraft called Miss Liberty. Um, in October of nineteen forty-one, she flew this little airplane non-stop from Vancouver, British Columbia, to Tijuana, Mexico, um, setting several records at the time. She flew for, it was seventeen hours and covered fifteen-hundred miles. Nobody had ever done anything like that in a light plane before. And she, uh, she said at the time she was inspired by Amelia Earhart, but she didn't have the funds to have a transoceanic airplane, so she did the best she could. And this, this little plane was one of the training ships they used in Albany. She, uh, she had it converted to hold eighty gallons of gasoline, where it normally would have held ten. And, uh, she flew all through the night, um, down to Tijuana, through bad weather and all kinds of mishaps. We, we could talk for hours about just that flight. Here she is, uh, this is over Albany as it's getting dark on her way south. One of the things that we're hoping to do, um, in the historic hangar someday is restore Evelyn's Miss Liberty and be able to tell about that part of the history here. I, I think a lot, um, about people who might be going to the airport to get their plane worked on, or maybe they're going to take flying lessons or rent a plane. They have to drive right by this sign, and I wonder how many people actually look at the sign and think that it says Historic Albany Municipal Airport. I, I know that I've talked to a lot of people that don't know anything about this history.
Sorry.
That's not muted.
No, somebody emailed me.
So this, this last weekend, uh, we had an opportunity, um, through the History Preservation Month, to have an open house at the hangar. And we had, throughout the weekend, we had over three hundred people that came by to learn about the hangar. And we had several antique airplanes on display. This is a nineteen twenty-nine Heath Super Parasol that was built in Springfield and's been flying in Oregon ever since. This, this picture shows the lattice-work trusses. Um, there's seven trusses that hold the, the roof structure. Like I said, it's clear-span. Th- this airplane, or this, uh, hangar's remarkable because when it was built, there was nothing there. There was a gravel runway and this hangar. But it took, it took vision to build a, building that big. What they were trying to do was build something big enough to hold a Ford Tri-Motor, which was the, basically the airliner of the time. Yeah, here's some of the Ninety-Nines. Um, for those of you that don't know, the Ninety-Nines are a group of women pilots, and Amelia Earhart was their first president.
They actually joined us on her birthday, twenty twenty-one, at the airport. So the Ninety-Nine, oh, it's on. The Ninety-Nines actually flew into the airport, a lot of them did. We had a part, her birthday party on the air, airport tarmac, cake and food and everything, so it was wonderful to meet them.
Yep.
Debbie set it all up.
And they're, and they're coming back. We'll talk about that. Here, here's, uh, Glenn and Larry and I, um, we had a model display this weekend, and it was really well-received. This little airplane was built by, uh, Ray Scholar students, um, in the, uh, Experimental Aircraft Association. They build a plane, and they sell the plane, and then the proceeds go to build another plane. And these kids get to learn all about, um, aircraft construction. And many of the people that build these planes go on to careers in aviation. This was a display, um, that Joel did for us, um, about the construction and history of the hangar. Uh, this little T-craft there is, uh, the one that I fly, my brother and I fly, and it's the same exact plane that Evelyn flew. And, uh, next to it, you can see the fuselage there that we'll be using to restore the plane. And here's a picture of her with the, with the plane. This is one of the planes that was on display. It's a newer plane, but it shows nicely the historic hangar and also the historic, uh, beacon that's there. That, that beacon is also from the late twenties, and it was used for airmo- airmail pilots to find their way. Oh.
That's your last one?
There should be more. No, I, I guess that's it. So I guess what I'd like to close with is that, um, what we'd like, our, our vision for this hangar is that it be a working museum, um, where, uh, uh, aviation artifacts can be, uh, stored, preserved, and, um, shown to people to tell the history of Albany's aviation. And we also want it to be a place of learning and a place of gathering. Uh, we envision there being banquets and, uh, meetings there. Um, one exciting thing that's, uh, coming up is, uh, the hangar will be a hundred years old in nineteen twenty-nine, so will the Ninety-Nines. And we just recently learned that they've committed to coming to Albany for their Western Regional Section Meeting to celebrate their hundred years, um, in nineteen twenty-nine. And our hope is that, uh, we'll be able to host them. It'll be a big deal. There will be, um, hundreds of people that come to Albany for that, and they'll be staying in Albany for the weekend. So, but we hope to have a lot of events there, um, throughout the coming years. Does anybody have any questions?
Counselor Montague.
I just have a comment. I was able to, um, go to the open house this weekend, and it was very amazing, and I really appreciate everybody who, um, got together and put that on. It was, it was really cool. Thank you.
Yeah, just wondering, do you have any kind of an estimate what the restoration might cost?
No, we're, we're really still in the very beginning phases of this. Um, uh, I appreciate that, um, folks in the city have been working with us and giving us an opportunity to get in the building and start figuring out, you know, what we might do in the future. Uh, one of the next steps is gonna be forming a five-oh-one C-three, so that we can start working on grants and, um, accepting donations and building a coalition of volunteers. The State Historic Preservation Office knows about the building, and they already know that we're gonna be looking for grants to restore it to its former glory.
So I feel like you might be a little modest here. So I had the opportunity to speak with Debbie Orger a few weeks ago about this project. I'm actually in process of, um, appointing her to the Airport's Commission. Um, I thought it was important to have her on the commission because women are historically underrep- underrepresented in aviation. Uh, she was mentioning to me that they envision, or, or, that she's envisioning, and whoever she's working with, it might have been your name. I apologize. I don't recall the name she gave me, um, having, you know, some sort of STEM classes that would come out, uh, like after-school program for kids that are in middle school or high school, come out and learn more about how aviation works, about engines, about just everything. And I think that's really cool. Uh, so I know you didn't touch on that, and I kinda, I guess maybe spoiler alert, but that was really exciting to me, and, um, I'm not sure if you wanna elaborate more on that, or any other, uh, facets of that part of the project.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I missed that. Um, actually, I was trying to carry through with Debbie's part of the, um, presentation, and I probably missed some of her notes, but we're both passionate about getting kids involved in aviation. And, um, so she's really involved in the Young Eagles Program, where kids get to go for flights, uh, with EAA members. And we sort of envision a, a place where kids come at age-appropriate levels and, and build models, and, um, keep growing with, uh, aviation principles, and then move on to perhaps being in the Ray Scholar Program and, um, learning to fly or learning to work on planes. Um, so yeah, we, we don't want it to be, our vision is that it won't be like a s- I don't wanna say a standard museum, but we want it to be a place of growing and learning and passion for aviation.
Counselor Smith.
I'm thinking in, in my mind that this is, um, well, I, what I have envisioned is what's happening at Pearson Field in Vancouver. That, that's a really good example of the type of museum this could be. I think they do the same types of activities there, and anybody who hasn't seen that ought to take a visit. I stumbled onto it when I was attending a conference in Vancouver some years ago. There was a reception there one evening. Perfect place for that. And lots of Vancouver aviation history stuff for kids to do. I was, I like your idea.
Thank you. Counselor McGee?
Um, I am a museum geek, so I love museums. I go to wherever state or country I am in, I try to go to a museum. Try to go to a museum, can you? So I just think this is a fantastic idea. Um, coming from a big city where museums are huge, I love, I love the idea of, um, I have a neighbor who is in high school, and he went to an event with me. Um, and he didn't even know the, the airplane was right there, so I had, like, drove around and showed him. He's like, "Oh, my God, I'm gonna bring all my friends over here," 'cause he's new to town and he had not seen it, did not notice it. And they've lived here for a few months now, so, like you're saying, a lot of people don't know about it. So I think it would really be awesome to, to do what you are envisioning, um, and interacting with the kids would be awesome. Okay.
Thank you. I just wanna add my own two cents. Um, I've almost all my life been super impressed with the history of our town, but up until this evening, I didn't realize that our history included the oldest continuously-operating airport in the state. So it's just one more thing to be proud of, and I thank you for bringing it to our attention. And I too am a museum geek, and I've been to some other aviation museums, the one in McMinnville, and, um, that's what comes leaping to my mind. But, um, I am excited about your ideas as well. So just wanted to add my two cents. Thank you.
Well, we don't have specific, we're not asking for a specific direction, uh, today's. We just wanted to give you all the information on the background, and, uh, we still have lots of work to do. They have lots of work to do to figure out their nonprofit. And then eventually, we'll come before you with some sort of agreement with the entity that they set up, so that we can have an official agreement for you to review and approve. So more to come.
So I would like to get the Airport Commission involved, at least have their input as well.
Yes, that, they gave a presentation to the Airport Commission a few months ago, and the Airport Commission voted to, they approve and support this endeavor.
Didn't they also present at Landmarks?
They did also present at Landmarks.
They're also working with Landmarks, too.
Well, they'd have to.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good work. Uh, next on tonight's agenda is Community Development Block Grant to twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-seven Consolidated Plan, Twenty Twenty-Three Action Plan Review, pages two through one seventy-eight in your packet.
Thank you, Council. I, I'm Anne Catlin. I'm the Conference of Planning Manager for the Community Development Department, and I wanna introduce Beth. You probably know Beth, but Beth Frehler is, uh, heading up the Community Development Block Grant Program, and she's going to give you a preview of, um, the program and the items in your packet in advance of the meeting Wednesday, just so that if you have any questions, we can address those tonight and bring them back if we need to Wednesday.
Thank you, Anne. Good afternoon, counselors and mayor. Uh, like Anne mentioned and Mayor Johnson mentioned, I will be, uh, presenting on the Consolidated Five-Year Plan, the Twenty Twenty-Three to Twenty Twenty-
Could you get a little closer to the mic? I'm having a hard-
Absolutely. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
I'm new to using mics. Um, so I'll be presenting on the Twenty Twenty-Three to Twenty Twenty-Seven Consolidated Plan and the Twenty Twenty-Three Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant. Um, so first, I'm just gonna give a little bit of background on the Community Development Block Grant, and then I'll transition into talking about the Five-Year Plan and the Annual Action Plan. So this, I'm gonna call it the CDBG Program, because otherwise it's a bit of a mouthful. The CDBG Program is a HUD-funded program, so it's federally funded, and the city of Albany is, um, an entitlement city, which means that we get an annual allocation from HUD. And overall, the program objectives are for decent housing, suitable living environment, and economic opportunities that primarily benefit Albany's low and moderate-income residents. So everything kind of ties back to those program objectives. And so with the program comes certain requirements, and those are outlined on the screen, but today, I'm coming with the Five-Year Plan and the Annual Action Plan. And the public hearing on Wednesday, at Wednesday's council meeting, is part of us fulfilling our Citizen Particip- Participation Plan requirements. So with federal funds come federal regulations. That's, um, true for CDBG, just as it is with anything that comes with those federal funds. So you'll see some of those regulations that were required to follow. Um, the strings attached sometimes can make, can bring challenges to the program, uh, but we do our best to make the best use of the funds while still abiding by these regulations. You know, also in us, there's some program restrictions, and I just wanna highlight that one of those restrictions is that there's, we can only spend fifteen percent of our annual allocation on public services. And unfortunately, those, that's where we see a great need, and the most applications that we receive are for those public service funds, um, but there's a limit on how much we can devote to those. And then all of the activities and projects that we fund have to tie back to both those, um, program objectives and also the goals that are outlined in our Five-Year Plan. And so this Five-Year Plan really does represent kind of a foundation for the program over the next five years. So now I'm gonna talk a little bit about that Consolidated Plan. Obviously, with a hundred-and-seventy-some pages, there's, uh, lots of information in there, um, but I'm just gonna highlight some pieces of it. So in terms of the process, we tried to collect a lot of different information and data, both from the community, from agencies that serve the populations that CDBG can benefit, and also from just, uh, sources like the census, our point-in-time homeless count, um, reports and plans from the state or other agencies, uh, to really inform the plan. And so, uh, going through this plan, there's a few key themes that emerged. So the first one was that there's a need for more affordable housing. Um, the second is that there's a need for transitional and supportive housing. And these are themes that you see both in the needs analysis, needs assessment, and the market analysis, that our housing supply has just not kept up with demand, and that for people that are low or moderate income in Albany, they are really facing, um, a high housing cost burden, and it's difficult And it's difficult for people to find affordable housing. Even people who have Section 8 vouchers find it difficult. And then we also heard from our agencies that serve some of our vulnerable populations that there really is a need for transitional housing, especially for people that are working to exit the shelter system. There's not a lot of housing that they can move from the shelter into. And then also a need for supportive housing for people with mental health disorders or substance abuse disorders or other types of disabilities. As far as like our public service needs, again, there was an emphasis on serving vulnerable populations, such as seniors, people with disabilities, mental and behavioral health conditions, survivors of domestic violence and people who are homeless. And then broadly, just in terms of services that are needed to support our low-income households that maybe aren't necessarily a special population, there was an emphasis on the need for affordable childcare, youth programming, and also like housing support or utility assistance. And then we also looked at what our community development needs were, especially in areas that are lower or moderate income neighborhoods. And we feel like there are needs potentially to improve facilities there or also accessibility to make sure that people with disabilities have access to all of the amenities or just services that are available. If you can't get in the door, then the service is not really available to you. So we wanted to make sure that we captured that need so that we can potentially use funds to address that down the line. And then, of course, we also know that to help people reach stability and economic security, they need economic opportunities. And that is a pathway to becoming more secure in their housing and other needs. So the CDC, the Community Development Commission, reviewed all of this information that was gathered. And as a result, they came up with these plan goals, these strategic plan goals, which are to increase affordable housing options, maintain the existing affordable housing stock, support public services for low and moderate income residents and including people that are part of special populations or vulnerable populations, support economic opportunities for low and moderate income residents and strengthen low and moderate income neighborhoods and accessibility. And those you can see really clearly tie back to the needs that were identified in the preceding parts of the strategic plan or the consolidated plan. So as a part of this plan, we're tasked with estimating what our allocation will be over the next five years. We aren't given information on what we can anticipate. And so we did our best and estimated that we think we'll get about $1.7 million over the course of the next five years. What we do know is that our allocation for the program year 2023, our upcoming program year, is $335,142. And so with that, I'm going to transition into the annual action plan, which outlines our strategy for the coming year and what we recommend that those funds are allocated towards. So you'll see in the table that we have the activities that are recommended for allocating funds categorized by which goal they would address. For some of the activities, you'll see that it just says 2022 Carryover Funds. That means that was an activity that started in this year, but they have not used up all of their funds and it will continue into the next year. And so the amount of money is really determined by what have they spent at the close of this fiscal year. So each of these activities that's being recommended has gone through a competitive application process and the Community Development Commission evaluated each of those applications according to how well they thought it addressed the priority needs and goals that are outlined in our consolidated plan and just how well the agency presented their application and likelihood that they could accomplish what they had outlined in their application. So do they have the capacity to do the program that they're recommending, that they're applying for? So this slide shows the public service activities. And again, I'll note that these were the most competitive grants and the fewest resources that we have to devote to those. But we were able to, we're recommending to support affordable childcare, youth programs, outreach to unsheltered homeless folks, case management in shelter for homeless youth and services for seniors that are homebound, as well as carrying forward some of the programs from this year that have not concluded. So up next, in the coming months, you'll see me again when I come back and share our annual performance evaluation report, which will show what we have done over this past fiscal year or program year and the objectives that we've, excuse me, that we've met. So you can look forward to that after June 30th. I believe that will be in September. It takes us a little bit to compile that information. And then we're also working on the fair housing analysis, the impediments to fair housing analysis. And so that is something that I will continue to work on with the Community Development Commission and you'll see in the coming year. And with that, I will open it up to questions and comments.
Counselor Smith?
Can you repeat the percentage that's limited to public service?
Yes, absolutely. We're limited to 15% of our total allocation.
That's what I thought. That's not much.
This, this year it worked out to be about $50,000.
Thank you.
Counselor Montague?
That answered a lot of questions I had about why we weren't spending as much money on those. But I did have a question about the carryover from 2022. Why do we have so much carryover from 2022?
So part of it is that although ideally we would get our contracts sent and out the door like July 1, that there's a delay between when we get approved from HUD and then when we get contracts out the door from our city perspective, because there are some, like we have to get their insurance and we have to make sure that they've got their certifications in place. And then we have to get the contract ready to go and all the Ts crossed and Is dotted. I almost said that backwards. So sometimes there's a bit of a delay, which means that, and we, our contracts are for 12 months. So any delay that happens into our program year means that likely it could continue into the next year.
So that's pretty normal then because of?
It has been, but we're hoping to tighten that up. And in addition, some projects like the Creating Housing Coalition, Tiny House Village, it was a really extensive environmental review. And actually, those are, I think, 2021 funds. And some projects just take a really long time to get out, you know, off the ground. But our goal is to minimize that carryover amount. And we're going to try to work on those contracts earlier this year. But it's just, there's a lot of, there's a lot of paperwork involved. And yeah, we, some projects just take longer. Like with the pandemic, it slowed down housing rehabilitation because, you know, people didn't want contractors in their homes, et cetera. So there's been a little bit of backlog from the pandemic and just the nature of the regulations can be a little bit cumbersome.
But yeah, we are trying to each year chip away at that carryover.
Thank you. And then just a little bit of feedback in the packet. Next time, can you include a census tract map? Because I ended up having to Google that. I had no idea what that was, so.
Thank you.
Absolutely, yes. The census tract map. Because they referred to it a couple of times and I ended up just having to Google it. So I knew where, what area they were talking about, so.
That's a really good idea. We could put that image in the plan, actually. In some of the plans, we do have some of those identified. And then we can shade them to show which ones are the lowest income and do something like that.
Yeah, that's great.
I did find the written description of each of the census tracts towards the end. But it's, some people are map people and some people are word people, so it's helpful.
Be nice having both in there. Anybody over here? Counselors? Counselors? If you do have questions, we'll see you again on Wednesday night, correct?
Yes, you will.
Thank you very much for your presentation this evening. And I will tell you, she has done a great job of herding the cats around the Development Commission. So well done. And I'm one of those cats.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, next on the agenda is the Electrical Program, Rafi's Johnson-Balkema, pages 179 to 182 in your packet. You going to share a presentation?
Yes. Good afternoon, Johnson-Balkema Building Official with the City of Albany. Today, we're going to talk about proposed fee changes for the building and electrical program. So they're kind of going to blend together. As you see on the agenda, they're kind of one right after the other, but it works better to put them together. So if that's okay with you, that's how we'll handle it. So just some basic discussion. I know several of you are new and we don't come to you, council very often, ask for a fee change. So little history, so that way you guys have a better understanding of how our program operates. So the first thing is the building inspection program, the electrical inspection program are actually state programs that the City of Albany has assumed authority over. So we have a certain amount of rules that we have to do. Like right now, we're coming to talk to you, even though we don't plan to ask you to take any official actions until the middle of June because we have to give a 45-day notice period, those sorts of things.
Can you get a little closer, please?
Yes, definitely.
Bring the mic toward you.
Excuse me. The building inspection program is based on a dedicated fund. So all of our funds have to be used for the state program. We can't use them for every, anything else. And the use is actually limited by statute. And then we do receive a tiny portion of general fund only for shared permit texts that does plannings, counter duties also. And then if approved by council, 5% of my salary, because I manage the permit texts and then do those things, will be covered out of the general fund next year too. Again, since I can't use building funds for those other elements.
Could you repeat that? 5% of your salary, what?
Would be coming out of the general fund because I manage a planning staff member and then the permit texts that do stat, planning duties. So since my funding currently is 100% from the building inspection program, I have to have other funds to do that element, so.
Thank you.
Fees for the building inspection program, so especially the inspections themselves, are collected at issuance only. So we get a one-time shot at getting money for inspections. And then those services have to be rendered throughout the life of a project. So if you use something like West when they did their expansion, it took almost two and a half years for them to do that. So they gave us money at one point in time. Those fees have to carry over and I have to have staff for the entire time, the entire duration of that project. So it's very important that we have a healthy reserve. So that way, when we don't have those large projects, we can continue to operate. In that context, we do have a dedicated reserve fund. The state has provided guidance that their ideal circumstance coming out of the Great Recession is that we maintain an average of 18 months' worth of operating reserves. If you go for a new program assumption, they actually want us to have 24 months of revenue that does not, how do they word it? That does not create a burden on the public, is I believe how the rule is written. The last time we went through a Great Recession, we actually did run out of our reserve and my predecessor had to come before council and ask for a $300,000 loan to keep the program afloat while we made it through the recession and immediately following by a large fee increase. And then we just went and ratified the new labor contract for my work group. And we now know about what our personnel costs for actual staff hours are going to be through the next two bienniums. So we know that personnel costs are going to go up about 15% over that contract terms. And then the last fee changes, I won't say increases in all cases, but fee changes took place in 2019 slash 20 for the building inspection program. And we haven't done one for electrical since 2010.
I'll just jump in. I was quite flabbergasted to see the fact, last time we took a look at it was 2010. Yeah, that's way outdated.
Yes, it is a little bit outdated, especially when you look at the other areas too. So as I mentioned, we have a reserve that we operate out of. Currently, the building inspection program's reserves approximately $2.5 million. That's anticipated at the end of this fiscal year. Obviously, it can fluctuate. And that fluctuation is partially due on those other two bullets that I have there, the uncertainty of the building environment. Like typically, we're starting to see a lot of applications, specifically planning this time of year, and it's a lot slower than it normally is. So that revenue may not come in for the next two months like we would anticipate. So it could actually be lower than the $2.5 million. And then currently, we have two positions that are funded but unfilled, which is helping prop up the reserve a little bit more. So impacts that we know that's going to impact the reserve going forward is just that staff increase, just in the biennium. Staff increases go up 8%. And then the proposed budget shows our central service charges, so the service charges for the rest of the city that we pay a portion of is going to go up about 35%. Using that methodology and carrying it out for an approximate five-year term, by the end of the labor contract that we have, it appears that the building reserve will fall to less than one year of reserves in two bienniums. The Electrical Program has approximately $440,000 in reserve. Oh, sorry.
Sorry. One question. The reserves are projected to fall to below one year by 2027 if no increases are enacted.
Correct.
Is that correct? Thank you.
Correct. The Electrical Program has approximately $440,000 in its reserve. Similar attributes are going to affect it depending on projects coming in and then the current staff costs. Central service charges aren't as strong on that one because of how they're calculated. So the increase in the central service charges in that area is only approximately 20%. It too will fall just about 12 months by 2027. So when we looked at what we needed to do to make sure we stay within the state guidance, this package doesn't all, in all cases, actually raise fees. In certain cases, it actually lowers some fees to set up a better structure for going forward and potentially coming back in future years to try to make sure that we stay level. So one of the things that we did look at was increase the base fee. Quite often, our permits, we end up underwriting them by those larger projects. You know, that is pretty typical in the industry. But especially during a recession, during a slowdown, it's more important to make sure that we're covering at least the physical staff that are going out there, whether or not they're covering the true overhead. So we're adjusting that or proposing to adjust that. So right now, the base fee in certain programs are only covering about 50% of the entire cost to operate the program. We're also looking at proposing incremental increases to recapture staff-only costs. So one of the things that we'll look at in the proposed fees is actually only going a part of the way this time, seeing how the forecasts look, see how the economy is looking and potentially coming back and going forward on a base fee to get closer to the $9,500 range that needs to be implemented. One thing that we did do was look at how we have the entire fee guide. That's a further down bullet. But we want to make sure it's very easy for our customers to review. So under the structural permit alignment, you had what we refer to as one- and-two-family apartments, or one- and-two-family and duplexes and townhouses in one valuation table, then everything else in a different valuation table. So in the proposed version, we're actually merging those together. So people don't have to try to understand building code terms to figure out what their permit fee is going to be based off of one table, one easier solution for everybody. So while doing that, one of the things we wanted to do is recapture the savings that we've provided in going fully digital with our permits and plan review processes. So we're proposing to reduce our plan review fees while doing an increase into our structural fees in most areas. And then that way, it kind of balances the two out. The other part about doing that is it offers us a uniform plan review fee process going through there. So if you looked at the existing adopted table, I have a 25% plan review fee here, a 35 in this program, a 40 in this program, a 65 in this program. We just want a level playing field of 50, so that way it's again easy for the customer to just know, just times by 1.5, that's going to be your permit and your plan review fees, instead of having to guess which one is in each case. Another area that we're looking at, actually codifying, is something that we have piloted over the last year, which is a master plan review discount, also known in a lot of places as a repeat plan. So if you have the same building plan and you use it often, I did the review the first time, the second time, we're actually giving you a discount, a 50% discount, because the staff time is significantly less in those ones. So if people use that program, they can actually save half of their plan review fees. And then one of the big things that I've wanted to do for quite a while is actually consolidate and remove unused fees. Our previous tables, especially in, say, parking lots, sprinklers, fire alarms, those sorts of things had a lot of areas that either were not used or infrequently used, but when they were used, kind of penalized our customers because of the price point that was attached to them. So we kind of simplified it and then realigned the actual fee that's associated with those elements to make sure that they were in line with cost recovery and not exorbitant. One of the big ones that's in this package has to do with our temporary certificate of occupancy. So the building department ends up providing those when projects are not ready to get their full certificate of occupancy. And quite often, they're not tied to the building code. Quite often, the building code might be done, but they're still waiting on Public Works elements, those sorts of things. So we are proposing to change the structure of it to, one, get cost recovery, because it ends up being a fair amount of staff time for the amount of energy that we put into them. And then, two, they do increase in volume to make sure that there's an incentive for the project to actually get done. Quite often, you know, when you look at our current structure of a $200 flat fee versus putting in, say, a traffic signal at, you know, $50,000, it's a lot cheaper to just pay that TCO for quite a while instead of actually just finishing the project, so.
How often do projects not get done?
They all get done at some point, but they consider to, they somewhat drag on, per se. Less here, but I worked in a previous jurisdiction where several big commercial buildings chose to live on TCO instead of putting in a traffic light on a highway, because it was going to be millions of dollars.
Yes, I have another question. I'm sorry, I lose the end of your sentences. I don't know what you just.
You sent the tail off.
I have no idea what you, can you say that again, please? And maybe if you could, forgive me, but if you could speak a little more slowly and clearly, maybe I'll catch your words. I'm missing a lot of what you say.
Okay. So in Albany specifically, we don't, while we offer TCOs, people do ask for TCOs. They don't get used as often because of how Public Works has their elements structured. But it does come up. So we have the Timber Ridge Apartments, both sets of them. The ones that are complete and the ones that are currently under construction have operated under TCO while they were finishing off-site public improvements. What can happen is while they're going down that process, there's elements that can be cost prohibitive to finish in a timely manner, so they would rather just live on a TCO to run them out. So we use a lot of our standardized-sized apartments, for example. A lot of them are, say, a 12-unit building. Well, if my flat fee is 200 bucks at current rent, you know, at around $1,500 an apartment, it's a no-brainer that, yeah, I might as well do that and defer putting in that, whatever it is from a Public Works perspective. So one of the discussion points that is to make sure that there's enough of an incentive that these actually get completed instead of just dragging out. We have one project that we are currently working on that, in theory, the public improvements could have been done probably last summer, but they're still choosing to live on TCO instead of finishing those projects, which is fine, that's their doing, but especially from a Public Works perspective, they really want them to try to get the project finished, especially public streets and those sorts of things. But what I was, had previously said, I'd worked in a different jurisdiction where a large, large commercial projects were choosing to defer, like, a streetlight instead of actually finishing their project.
And now I'm almost embarrassed to ask. That helped a lot, thank you, in terms of being able to understand your words. But would you repeat for me, please, what TCO means?
Temporary Certificate of Occupancy.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Are you done, Councilor?
Yes, sir.
So the question I have is, can't we set a timeline for each of the TCOs? Say, you got three months, two months, one month?
So you, yeah.
Excellent. So you have three months on this, oh, sorry. You have three months to complete this on this TCO. And then if they renew the TCO, then the cost goes up?
Correct.
Is that was the current process?
So, no, the current process is 100% flat fee. So for an apartment building, regardless of size, it's $200. Excuse me. So that was one of the discussion points that we actually did have. So basically, they do renew the TCO every 30 days just to make it less burdening on customers. We allow them to do a 90-day TCO, so that way we don't have to keep invoicing them basically every month. So yes, one of the discussion points that we did have with Public Works was doing that type of model where it's this fee, and then that next time, it basically goes up exponentially until, obviously, it's a, not cost advisable to continue under the TCO process. We chose right now to propose only doing a flat fee version instead of doing a ramp-up version.
So could you bring us back a couple of options to consider? I mean, if, if it makes no sense to just let them go, 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 and go, why wouldn't we put some meat into it and say, you have three months on this one, beyond that, it's going to cost X? So to incentivize them to get it done within that three-month window?
Yes, definitely can bring back some options.
Can you explain the reasoning behind not changing the fee based on size of the?
By not changing it?
You mentioned that it was $200 regardless of size.
That was the original version. The proposed version goes by a rate by tenant suite or a part, number of apartments.
Okay.
So that is based on the size now, instead of a flat fee.
Okay.
Is what the proposal is.
Anybody else? So thank you. So we just covered items.
Got the last two bullets.
Oh, you're not done yet? Go ahead.
And then creates more user-friendly structure, which is what we were doing, and then having an easier setup for future adjustments. So wanted to provide you guys some examples, so you can kind of see how the proposal would actually impact customers. So from a new home's perspective, basically, this side on the left is what our existing fee structure would be. The proposed would be on the opposite side. And of course, my controls are blocking my screen, so I can't see all of it. So basically, it looks like we would have, for a new house, if they didn't use the master program, an approximate additional cost of $181 for a 2,000-square-foot home with a 500-square-foot garage and three bathrooms. If they choose to use the master program, the repeat program, they could potentially actually save $262 using that program. When you look at the same concept for an apartment, it looks like we go up. I'm going to use my phone, since it's.
Well, at the bottom of down, the building comes down a little bit.
So yeah, we're, uh, 500, $538 on a new apartment complex of savings. And that's because of the, really, the restructure saves a tiny bit in commercial while we're getting used to that one single table. And then similar concept with the apartments, or an office building, it did a 400-square-foot, or 4,000-square-foot apartment building that offers a similar savings at the bottom there.
Councilor Newton had a question.
Yep.
So what I'm, what I'm saying is that it was $577 cheaper than previously. I'm just curious, I know that Public Works is underfunded. Can you explain the reasoning behind this?
So when we're merging the two fee tables, so the residential side, the one-and-two-family side, ends up going up where equality-wise, using the savings from the plan review, because you end up paying both of them, it ends up with about a 5% cost increase. The commercial, because it was considerably higher than the one-and-two-family originally, ends up dropping a little bit, so it ends up being about a 7% decrease to standardize those two tables, so that way we're not overly burdening the residential initially. And then when you do have a big commercial project, because again, part of what we were choosing to do was look at a holistic approach, not just, I need to provide the program $1.5 million, how am I going to do that? It's the cost to actually do those inspections and try to make sure that each program area pays their quote-unquote "fair share" type thing. So the commercial one had been elevated a little bit higher than it necessarily needed to be, so it's balancing it back out.
Okay.
Like I said, and the intent of this package is, within the structural side of it, is just to create that even playing field for future increases.
How does this compare to other cities, how they structure their fees?
So by, by state law, we have to have a uniform process. So basically, I have a administrative rule that just tells me exactly how I have to do it. Whether you do a single or a multiple depends on the cities. Quite often, they use a single one, because it is the easiest to implement for everybody.
So the state provides guidance, and then you have to execute that guidance?
Not necessarily guidance, requirements, but yes.
Me, too. Go ahead, Councilor.
I can't, I guess it's home rule, my, two of my favorite words. So when the state, you said, provides requirements, not guidance, as home rule, so we, we have no, whatever the state says, we have to do?
So this is actually a state program that we chose to assume. So in 2009, they created a uniform methodology that we are required to use and have been required to use, the exact style of methodology that we're using since 2009.
And you said we chose to, to use the state's methodology in 2009?
No, the state mandated those methodologies in 2009 to make sure that everybody used a uniform approach.
Please.
How long have we been administering state building code programs?
Since 1973.
Thank you.
Okay, so our.
I'm sorry, I had a.
Go ahead, please.
You mentioned in the presentation about a savings program. I briefly heard, and, and my question was, how are you promoting that savings program? Because I heard something about savings program for residents, or?
So we, during this fiscal year, we piloted a program. So we used one of the large production builders that we used to make sure that the program worked the way we intended it. And then we also used one of our local developers that was doing some middle housing to make sure that it would work for that one. And then as long as all the budget gets approved coming forward in the next few months, for July, we'll be promoting the entire package as open to everybody. But we are, we are letting people know about it. So previous counselor that may be doing a tiny house village, you know, they're aware of that package coming through and stuff like that, because since they're using, what, the same three plans or four plans?
Thank you. We'll see Wednesday night?
No, I will not be back until middle of June, unless you guys would like to hear the options before that works.
So who's going to present Wednesday night?
Mayor, it requires a lengthy public comment period, so it has to be out for 45 days.
So next, we will likely come back in between and at least discuss that element.
So would you mind, if you, I'm going to send questions in. Who do we send the questions to? You send them to you, or you send them to him?
You can send them to Jonathan or Matthew, and they can make sure your questions get answered.
Okay, that work?
I think so. I.
I have questions, too, but.
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't wait till June, so I'll send them in myself.
Well, I, could I say one last thing?
Sure.
Because I'm thinking about it now, and I, I could easily walk away and forget. If I'm understanding correctly, so we're following, we've adopted whatever the state mandates, and they have the reasons for what they do. But we just listened to a presentation and read hundreds of pages about housing issues, shortages. And so I guess part of what I'm wondering, fees, extra codes, some codes, I don't even know how much they're used, but all of these things, we're very aware that we have a housing shortage. And I, I just, I'm kind of at a loss to understand how things are done, because it doesn't seem to make things better. It seems to make it harder to build a home, an affordable home. We have great need of affordable homes, everybody knows this. And when we're abiding by all these things that the state is mandating, and you have to, now the state's mandating, you have to operate off 18, you have to have at least 18 months of reserves for whatever, so that you don't put a burden. Well, we're, we're already under a huge burden. We have people with nowhere, no roof over their head, or an insufficient roof with a kitchen or a bathroom that's not functional. I don't know, it, it just seems kind of self-defeating. And I, I don't mean to be Debbie Downer here, but I genuinely don't get it. I really don't understand how, on one hand, we're bringing, you know, it's being brought to our attention, and we know, because we see more people on the street than ever before, we have a housing crisis. And yet the response by the state, and we fall in line, is only making things more difficult to provide affordable housing. I, I'm just, I'm just flummoxed.
Yes. Director.
Good afternoon. So, no, there's a lot of information in the packet here. So in, fully understand there's going to be lots of questions, and some of you may not be entirely familiar with the state, or the state's delegation of their program to us, and us assuming that delegation. In between now and whether we bring back an intermediate with the Temporary Certificate of Occupancy package, like a ramped option there, if you guys have questions, feel free to give Jonathan or I a call. We can set up some time, or we can sit down one-on-one in a, you know, just in one of our meeting rooms to kind of go through and informally answer some of your questions and help get you familiar with that program, just so you're comfortable with it. We're more than willing to do that. It certainly understand it's a lot of information here.
You gonna do that? You can take them up on, when you have time.
Yeah, but that, that doesn't, how does that impact what I?
Well, it gives you a broader understanding, each of us a broader understanding, that's all.
Okay.
And I think.
But we're still.
And I think I'd add, what we're doing today and in the future in the June isn't a state mandate by any means. It's us making sure that we can maintain a program that does offer those inspection services, plan review services in-house, so we can help address the affordable housing by actually offering the services that we need to do to make sure they have safe housing, and trying to do it in a, as reasonable economic manner as possible while maintaining the program. program.
Go ahead, Marlon, Councilor Smith.
Thank you for saying that. I think the, the point of us having a building program is to enforce codes to build, to make sure that what gets built is safe to occupy. And affordable housing and expensive housing all needs to be safe to occupy. That's our, that's our duty to the public.
Thank you. Thank you, Jonathan. We'll see you on June.
Yes.
But we'll make sure we get questions to you or set up time to meet with you guys. Thank you.
Yeah, please do.
Next on tonight's agenda is bus fare information. Barry Hoffman, it's a verbal presentation, is Barry here today? There you are. I don't think you know all the councilors, so please introduce yourself and bring them up to speed on who you are and what you do.
Yes, sir. Hello. My name is Barry Hoffman. I'm the transit manager for the city of Albany and it's nice to be here. Hello to the new council members. I don't get in front of council very much, so it's nice to meet you and see you. I was last in front of council in late December. At that point, we were asking for additional employees so we could get to our expanded Albany Transit Service. And thank you, we were granted those employees and have been in the hiring process since, and I will talk, touch on that at the end of the presentation. At that time, we, we talked very briefly about bus fares and knowing that that is a complicated subject, I promised I would come back today and here I am. So have a presentation to go through and you can interrupt me if you have questions or you can wait to the end and we'll talk about all things bus fares. Okay. Oh, Chris also promised she would be my next please person.
Your what? Your what?
Next slide please person.
Thank you, okay.
Okay, so the first slide, why did we go fareless in 2020? And I am reading mostly from the slides here, but essentially a public transit ridership was immediately hit by the pandemic when most people went into lockdown. Fear surrounding being enclosed, confined places drove people to stay home on top of that. There we go. Now I forgot what I was going to say. The colleges and universities went to online school as well as of course the gaps. And it was decided to continue to run the system during that time as many people in the service industry, workers, students, nurses still needed to get to and from work, grocery and health appointments. And many people lost income during the pandemic, times were suddenly hard. So all those factors combined and ATS and, and Coloradoide and the Lindventon Loop, which are the three programs that I manage, went free. And at the same time, the federal government came through with some CARES and ARPA funding that helped us reimburse our expenses. Next please. So fares were last set by city council in September of 2018. On the left side is the Albany Transit Fair as of 2018, and that was a dollar for adults, 50 cents for senior disabled youth, children under six were free. And then we have monthly bus passes, which you'll notice the adult was $30 at that time, senior disabled youth were, were half that price. Coloradoide at that point was a $2 per person, per one-way ride fare. Next please. And then the Lindventon Loop was a $1.50 for the adult fare and 75 cents for the senior disabled youth. And then we had coupon books and monthly passes for the loop as well. The Loop Board, we've had some discussions about fares in the past couple of years and they have deferred to the city of Albany regarding returning to fares. Because in mainly it'd be too confusing for passengers to have to pay for the Lindventon Loop and then get to Albany and have it be free and then have to pay for the Lindventon Loop, particularly when we use the same buses to provide, and the buses all look the same, to provide the service. Next please. So it's important to note, it's mandated by the FTA that fares for senior disabled youth must be one-half of the regular fare on the buses. And it's also mandated that the paratransit system, in our case, it's Coloradoide, may only be twice the regular fare for Albany Transit. So looking at fares more closely, 2018, 19 was the last full year that we collected fares. And at the left column, you can see the budget expended, those are the end of year expenditures. The next column over is the ridership per service and then the fares collected. And then the far, far right column is the fare recover ratio. That is essentially the budget divided by the amount of fares collected. And, oops, I did have something more I wanted to say about that. So one thing you might notice is, well, if the fare was a dollar on Albany Transit, why there were 67,000 rides, why did we only collect $25,000? And part of that reason is a lot of people do ride senior disabled youth, is quite a bit of ridership, so they would only pay 50 cents per ride. And then on top of that, anybody who is a student would have been riding on an agreement pass from LBCC and OSU. So we actually do collect some revenue that's not fares, those are partnership amounts, but I didn't want to confuse those. So that's just one thing I wanted to clarify because it comes up, how come it's way less than, than what you would think it might be? Okay, Chris. Thank you. So something that's a little nuanced is that any fares that we collect cannot be used as matched to the federal grants. So our federal operating grants come with 50/50 match, so 50% local funds, 50% federal funds. And those are, funds are combined to pay for providing the bus service. And the FTA requires that the transit system deduct the fares from the eligible expenses before reimbursement. In the next slide, I'll give a quick overview, thousand foot, how that kind of works. Oops.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Maybe it's for later in the packet, but do we sell advertising on the side of the buses?
We're going to talk about that in just a little bit.
Okay.
Thank you. I, I anticipated that question. Let's skip this one, Chris, and go forward one more. Yes, okay, here's an example using simple numbers. If Albany Transit had $100,000 of eligible expenses and we collected $10,000 in fares, if we had $100,000 of expenses, a 50/50, you would expect 50,000 of local and 50,000 of federal to come together to pay for that. However, the FTA says you have to take the $10,000 fares off the top. So it reduces our eligible expenses to $90,000 and at 50/50, that's $45,000 local and $45,000 federal. So in this example, $10,000 in fares reduced our reimbursement to the federal transit by $5,000. Just the nuance in the law that you should be aware of. We'll go back one slide, Chris, thank you. Carvallos Transit, so most of you are aware, Carvallos Transit is a fareless system. They went fareless over 10 years ago. The city of Carvallos enacted a fee on utility bills that supplanted the fares that they used to collect on their buses. And because this was a fee paid, it's not a bus fare, so those funds are able to be used as match. One of the smart things that CTS did way back when. We'll go two, two forward, Chris, please. Looking at ridership, so during pandemic, ridership plummeted to all-time low. Sorry that it's one, two, one through 12, that's actually, number 12 would be the last of the fiscal year. So it's June through July. And so number 10 is spring of the 20, if you look at that orange line there, it's spring of 2020 when ridership plummeted. And then we went free in about month 11 and you could see we rebounded somewhat immediately, although we were at historic lows because the blue line up at the top would have been 18, 19 ridership. The highlighted row is where we are today. We've been fareless all along and are hovering along, not gaining a lot, but also remembering we're still providing the same old Albany Transit service that we have for many, many years. The next slide will show a little bit more about the Loop. The Loop had that same dip and I just call it a crash in 2020, month 10. And then the next year hovered really low and then recall that we did actually improve the Loop service in December of 2021. And I'm happy to report the highlighted line, we're getting back where we should be, although we are providing better service now than we were then. So that's, that's just really great news. Next please. This is really tiny and really hard to see, but this is 2014 survey data, so I realize this is almost 10 years old now. But the, the far right column I highlighted in yellow, basically 70% of transit users that surveyed at that time were, earned less than $25,000 and 40% earned less than $10,000. And bear in mind, we do carry a lot of students, college students are generally not, generally not high-income earners. Next. So at the last meeting, when fares came up, I said, well, I'm going to have to check with our FTA folks about what it would take to return to fares if we, if that's something we want to do. And they said to me, it's been too long of time since the pandemic started to call it a temporary measure, so essentially they told me, what does your plan say? And then in the quotation marks, you can read directly from what our own plan, this is our Title 19 plan, says, and essentially says that we, if we want to change fares, we have to have a public hearing in order to do that. And I think that's all we needed to get there, so next. Other information about, that you should be aware of, there are steps internally that we have to go through when we collect fares. So obviously fares are collected in fare boxes. The boxes have to be pulled from the buses at night because they're not allowed to sit with money in them at night, as you can understand why. There's staff time involved in that, about an hour for one person. Boxes are brought to the office and fares have to be counted in a secured room by more than one person. Then they're sorted by coinage, counted, reconciled, a deposit is prepared, fares are brought to the bank for deposit. That's about three hours a day, so one and a half hours times two employees. And then finance finally takes the deposit and credits it to the correct budget. That probably happens automatically, which is why I put staff time unknown. There's probably some staff time involved, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't know what that is. Okay, next. City bus advertising. So I also said that we, at the last meeting, we would look into this and we used to do advertising on the city buses and that stopped roughly 10 years ago. The contractor did, pulled out from us. It wasn't that they weren't getting any revenue, it was too hard for them to come, although they came out of Eugene, it was too hard for them to send a crew to Albany to change the bus wrap, essentially their bus wraps. And so they, at their request, they stopped the advertising contract. So there is a contractor in the area and CTS, which is Carvallos Transit, does use a contract and I am, work closely with the management over there. And so I, I needed new glasses because I can't hardly read my own numbers from here. If it was right here, I could do it.
I can barely read it, I'm sitting right here.
It's fine. So looking at their contract and extrapolating what our contract, we could assume a certain dollar amount in return for advertising, although I did, that contract was set up with CTS before the pandemic. So I don't know, we would have to go out for RFP for a contract, excuse me. And it's unknown whether we'd be able to collect that kind of money or less or more. We have, we have at least one question.
Go ahead, Councilor Monague.
So would the ad revenue reduce our match?
No, that, that would, thank you. It's a good question.
It'll go right to the general fund?
It, it would just come in, it would come into the budget and be able to be spent, be able to match federal dollars and be spent on operations.
So I know that there's a place out of Salem that does the same type of thing. I used to be in a network with that person. I'll reach out to them and get their information for you.
Yeah, and I've been told by Diane Merzinski that in order to, to enter into a, a contract for advertising, we would have to go out for a full RFP.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
We understand that.
And so when we do that, we'll see who responds.
Excellent.
May I ask a question?
Please.
Um, I believe No Dinks, which is a local business wraps cars, would they be able to submit?
Yeah, they have to respond to RFP, yeah. They could compete for that, it'd be awesome.
Because they're local, they're Albany and I would love to.
There's a few other.
See them be able to do that.
Can't remember the name of the company. Lamar is the company we used to do business with and, but there's a.
The one down in tangent too, it's got the.
Oh, yes.
Van Dyke.
Van Dyke Signs, they might be interested.
So we can encourage them to participate in the process?
Obviously, competition is a good thing when you're talking about revenue.
Yeah.
Okay, next.
Any other questions for today?
I have, I have a few more slides.
Okay, go ahead. I thought you were wrapping up, go ahead.
Thank you, I'll try to be quick, I know it's getting late. So one thing I did do was I took the time to survey the bus drivers because they're, besides the passengers, they would be most affected by having to collect the fares. And interestingly, out of 15, 10 were in favor of returning to fares and five were against. And then the next slide talks about, the next two slides talk about their, summary of what they talked about in their, in their writing back to me. And I'm just going to, you can read it on your own time, I will make sure to share the slides with the city clerk, so each of you will have a copy to go through. But there were some definitely interesting points that the transit operators had. And then the next slide is the ones that were in favor. And I think it's fairly obvious, less conflict with passengers, it's easier for the driver, it doesn't take much time to load and unload, where you don't have to deal with collecting a fare at the door. And given that, we'll move on.
Wait, wait, I thought you said there was five against.
Would you like to go back?
Yes, go back. You said there were five against in the first slide. One more, please.
Go back one more.
Go one more.
Yes, so they didn't just give me one response, this is a summary of their responses, the next two slides past this, I got a, I've got some that gave me a whole page of narration and I just summarized what their points were in, in some bullets.
One more slide?
Same, same thing here.
10 drivers against, that's what my question came.
Oh, you're right, sorry, 10. Oops, you're right, you're right, Mr. Mayor, that's five.
Okay, just making sure I didn't miss something.
Yep. So something also to consider, transfers are complicated. So this is a little map of what our new system will be. And if you're picking on a route, if you're on the red route and you pay your fare, if you want to change to the blue route or to the green route or to the purple route, you have to prove that you paid the fare already. In other systems, they give you a, a, a transfer slip. It's just, it's tedious, you have to walk up to the front again and say, I need a transfer, the driver has to give you one or push, in some cases, push a button and one pops up out of the machine. There's a lot of different ways that can be done, but it's complicated and it's.
So is this cash only for all these, all of these transactions?
Not necessarily. We actually, and I didn't put this, and forgive me, I did not put this in the slides, we do have a contract through the cog with, I'm going to forget the name of it. Essentially, you can pay your fare using your phone. So you have to have a phone, you have to have a data plan, you have to have a bank account, you have to have a lot of things, but if you have those things, you could show your phone and that would be your, your, your bus pass to get on.
But you can't, but you can't use a debit or credit card?
You cannot slide a debit or credit card, correct.
And you already told us that a lot of the ridership are people who are very, very, very low income, so they might not have those things. I don't understand what the difficulty is with a transfer. Like that's hard to pop one up and I don't.
Well, so our most modern buses do have the ability to push a button and a, and a slip pops up that you take on the way out the door. Our older buses don't have that technology and we haven't dealt with fares for years. And when we did, it was one bus to one bus, which makes it really easy. When you're talking four bus system. When you're talking four bus system and what, you know, it's, makes it really hard. So you can't say, hey, the guy in the blue jacket paid, right? Because there's hopefully going to be a lot more people than that. And they, they would have to tear off a piece of paper or have a one time, have a one time slip that they turn in the next time they get in the driver. It's just dealing with a lot of stuff. Yeah, and it's, it creates a conflict point at the front door, to be honest. People are trying to get in, you have someone trying to get out, needing something from the driver. And there is, oftentimes, there's wheelchairs. It just creates, it's a time, it's a time waster. It's not, it's just complicated. It's not that it can't be solved, it's just complicated. Next slide, Chris. Something that's, so our, our brand new buses that we got in 2021 came with Gen Fare computerized fare boxes. They still don't take a card, but they're computerized registering fare boxes. And those cost between $10,000 and $15,000 each. Those costs are normally built into the price of buying a bus. So if we went fareless for a long time, like Corvallis, they pulled all their fare boxes right out of their buses. They don't even buy them anymore. However, if we did that, or if they do that, and they someday wanted to return to fares, there's a large overhead cost to install fare boxes because it costs a lot of money.
Could we get them used from Corvallis?
What's that?
Could we get them used from Corvallis?
Well, you know, I don't know if they stored them or melted them down. They probably had a party and threw them in a fire. I don't, I don't know. I could probably ask if they have them stored in a warehouse somewhere if we ever got there.
Well, they're probably obsolete, too, since it's been years since they took them out.
They would be what's called, and I think that's on my next slide, it's just a vault fare box, you know, what you imagine a fare box to be as opposed to. So this is, we have a mix of fare boxes. Six of our old buses have the old vault style and four of our newest buses have computerized registering fare boxes. Those new fare boxes have a screen and you, you know, it's, they're actually pretty neat. They do a lot of things and they could do some calculations about ridership trends and things that we can't ever do with an old vault. But.
Can they produce a transfer slip?
Those, those new, the four newest ones can do that. I guess they can. And it's a, as people exit.
Okay.
But they still have to come to the front, which operationally, it's, it's a, it's an issue.
It's a pain point?
Yeah, next, next point, please. Next slide, sorry. These are a couple links that I found. There's a lot of information out there about systems that are both looking at going fareless and others that are really struggling, struggling financially. And I, I just highlighted these two because I found them. And then the little quotation was in that first, I found it interesting because this was a manager of their system saying their most common source of conflict was disputes over rider fares, which made up just 10% of their budget. And, and what, what this person said was, I'm not going to put our operators in danger over $1.50. And, and I understand that.
Wouldn't either.
It is absolutely, it has been 28 years since I drove a bus and charged fares, but it was absolutely a conflict point. I don't have enough money. Hey, I know I should be paying a dollar, all I have is 75 cents. I saw you yesterday and you had, you know, $20 in your hand. Where'd you $20, whatever? You know, you can just imagine the conversations that go on between drivers and passengers and people trying to, fare evaders that try to constantly evade the fare even though they know that the fare is supposed to be a dollar. Jump pennies in the box. You can't count 100 pennies in the box. So you just have to trust, you know? And then it turns out that it's never 100 pennies. Sometimes it is. I shouldn't say never. It's almost never.
Okay. Counselor Smith?
My comment was that this reminds me an awful lot of the decision to not collect library fines for overdue books any longer or overdue materials. The, the staff time and effort that goes into collecting very little money is, it outweighs any punishment factor. And it sounds like this is the same thing. We're devoting considerable public resources to try to get people to pay for something that they can't afford anyway. It's, it's, it's safer for the drivers, it's less expensive for our staff, it's a service, a broader service to the people who need public transit to not charge fares.
Yeah. And, and point accepted. And also there's the counterpoint, which, you know, that people should have some ownership and skin in the game and it keeps them honest. And so we have to balance that. And I understand that that's a tough job for you all to do. My job is to provide you the best information I can. And the next slide, I think, kind of talks a little bit. So the budget impact, the balanced budgets that you were presented are, are about to sign off on, included $0 of expected revenue from fares. This includes paying for the expanded ATS service without fares. Chris, okay, and yes, speaking of expanded service, so we constructed the first phase of bus stops. Our, we went out on a Sunday recently, and I don't know if any of you saw us on a Sunday, which would have been unusual, but we live tested the routes and the timing of the routes and we learned some good lessons and, and the drivers got some great time seeing what we're jumping into here. We began the hiring process in December, literally the day after the meeting when, when council gave us permission to hire employees. It's been a long road, but we're down to our last employee who is starting in June. He will come in in June and then be trained, take a few weeks to get trained. So barring any unforeseen circumstances and, there we go, don't lose any drivers between now and then. I believe the ATS expansion is on track for the summer.
Nice.
Which is a great time for us to start new service. And then the only thing I will caution you that might come to someone's mind is if you're planning an ATS expansion, do the fares at the same time. And I think that's a terrible idea because we want to be able to gauge the service changes and are people accepting that by riding more and not, at the same time, there's a fare which might cause people to ride less. So doing those two things at the same time wouldn't make sense.
Have a negative effect.
At another time perhaps, but not in conjunction. And I think that might be the end of lies.
Thank you.
If council desires, and if any council member desires, we can return to regular council session and hold a public hearing about fares. And then you all get to vote, I suppose.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you. I wanted, something that you referenced earlier, your, your drivers had brought up the point that there were people riding the buses who were intimidating others, some people just riding to get out of the weather and all that. And maybe some of those folks are the ones that are intimidating others. My question for you is, what is the Albany Transportation Service doing to address that situation? Because people who are minding their own business and just trying to get from point A to point B shouldn't have to feel like they're being endangered.
And I appreciate that. One of the things that we plan to do is, is lean a little bit on, on the police department's mental health specialists. And we haven't had an opportunity to do that yet with customers. But we also have to bear in mind that if you provide a public transit system using federal dollars, it, people have a right to get around whether or not they are struggling from mental health problems. And so, so yes, if they're causing a disturbance to the point that it's endangering others or themselves, then we can call the police department and have that person removed, which is difficult, puts the driver in a, in a tough spot, puts the passenger in a tough spot and anybody else on the bus in a tough spot. And you, as another citizen, have the right to ride the transit system and not be bothered by other people. So it's, but we can only control, you know, that which we can control. And so it is public. And once you get public, everybody can ride.
That there should be something that we can do.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Oh, please.
So what I think you're saying is that we only need to have a, a public hearing if we decide to reinstate fares. Is that correct?
That's true. If you do nothing, we can do nothing.
Then do nothing. Okay.
Okay. I think we're good. Thank you very much for your presentation. I would have a piece, some feedback I would give you. Go back a couple slides.
I tried really hard to make it contrasting.
Keep going. Right, give me one more. One more. Well, there was one where like three quarters of the page was picture and this much.
Just a little bit.
Just a little bit. So with reading glasses, it was even hard to see.
I hear you. You saw me struggling.
Yeah.
It was a little far away from me.
So we have a little bigger text and darker, pitch black or bold. Yeah, it's great presentation, but just remember, remember, we're looking at the screen away from us. So being able to see is to be helpful.
Yes, sir, and you'll get a copy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
Mayor?
Yes.
That's me. I would just say, you know, if there is no direction, then we won't plan to come back and implement fares. If the council would like to have a public hearing and consider fares, you'll need to tell us so we can get that scheduled on the calendar.
Counsel?
I have a question. If we don't decide to implement the fares, then what would, what would be the advertising on the side of the bus? Would it just be to tell people to take the bus because it's free?
No, 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 I'm talking about selling advertising.
Oh, selling advertising, okay.
Like, I love to have true life on the side of one of them buses, have my name on there.
Hey, all right, I was just wondering because if, okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
So Counsel, would you like them to bring back and talk about fees or? We can't make decisions, but we can have them come back.
They're asking for a direction.
Yeah.
And I'm not interested in reestablishing fees.
I agree, me either.
I, I do think, I do think that if we reestablished a minimal fee, that could in some ways address situations that I mentioned that the drivers have said where people are being intimidated on the buses.
But Barry also said that having, having payment at the, at the beginning, at the entrance.
Yeah.
Also provides a conflict point.
Right. And we want to lessen conflict.
We might be introducing more conflict by doing that.
So I'm going to go to Gabe, he had his hand up.
You, to answer what I heard as a procedural question, you can make a motion at a work session to either hold a public hearing or not hold a public hearing. Typically, staff likes motions because they're very, they have to be in the minutes and they're referable. I believe what Barry was saying is that you can't instate them tonight, but I think what Chris was saying was some sort of firm direction as opposed to just head nods might be helpful.
Okay, thank you. To help?
Yeah, Drack, did you want to make a motion then?
I move that we do not reinstate the fee. A second.
We have a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no? I didn't hear, didn't anybody say yes?
A silent vote is a yes vote.
Do a roll call, please. I didn't hear everybody.
Yes, Your Honor. Counselor Newton?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Montague?
Yes.
Kupczynski?
Yes.
McGee?
Yep.
And Smith?
Yes.
Six to zero, Your Honor.
Captain.
Thank you for the clear direction.
Thank you very much. Next is business from the council, and I will start with Counselor McGee, Montague first.
Other business? Nope, I do not have anything.
Counselor McGee?
Nope.
Nothing?
Not tonight.
Counselor Novak?
Not this evening. Thank you.
Counselor Kupczynski?
Nothing tonight.
Counselor Newton?
I don't have anything this evening.
Nor do I.
Nor do I. I'll save mine for Wednesday night then. Thank you all. I will have the city manager's report, please.
Thank you for having me as your interim acting, whatever I am, city manager. And just a reminder, the Wednesday meeting is potentially a long one, so we'll try to be efficient, but bring a snack if you need to.
And water.
It's Drinking Water Week.
Yes, it is Drinking Water Week, too. So yeah, bring water.
National Drinking Water Week. Thank you.
Yes, so bring water.